Please stand for the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Okay, we'll have the clerk call roll, please.
Counselor Reese Camp and Counselor Steinhebel have an excused absence. Counselor Grizzle. Counselor Bolin.
Here.
Counselor Dykstra.
Here.
And Counselor Nasar.
Here.
Thank you. First up, we have the consent calendar. It's fairly long. I'm not going to go through every single item. There's any questions, we can bring those up at this point. And if not, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve the consent calendar for this evening. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, the consent calendar is approved. And next up, we have proclamation. And it is fireworks safety awareness month in July, whereas fireworks are often a staple at festivities for many of our citizens, especially during the summer. And whereas many people do not realize just how dangerous fireworks and sparklers can be. And whereas the results of improper use of fireworks leads to nearly 12,000 injuries and more than 18,500 reported fires, structural, vehicle, and brush, resulting in millions of dollars of property damage. And whereas the Fourth of July fireworks season accounts for three out of every five of reported fires. Now therefore, I Mayor Paul RZs do hereby proclaim the month of July as fireworks safety awareness month and encourage all citizens to join me and the Lebanon City Council on spreading the word of the importance of fireworks safety. And next up, we have a presentation by Rod Sell in the Build Lebanon Trails Park at Cheetah Lake. Go ahead, Rod.
Great, wonderful. I think I'm supposed to share my screen, so we'll, we'll give that a try here. Is that working?
Not yet.
How about that?
Nope.
All right, this should be interesting.
Your IT department just walked in.
Yeah, I mean, it looks like it's, I'm sure it's green here, it changed. Like it's ready to go. I can shut it down and try it again. Any advice from?
So is it, your monitor shows that you're sharing your screen?
Yes.
Okay, and, and do you have open your PowerPoints to show, to project?
Yes. I can shut it down and try it again.
Yeah, shut down and try again may be the best way at this point.
Okay, now we're. Let's see here, I shut it down.
If I knew a computer guy, I would let you know, but.
I'm glad there's a computer guy here.
Yeah.
I'm glad you're back, Paul.
Thank you.
All right, so we're gonna. I think I closed it down, so now I gotta. Right, I know, first I gotta, my wife's helping here, I gotta call the PowerPoint up. So that's on my screen now, and now I'm gonna share the screen.
Here you go.
Hey, success, all right, sorry, boy, that cut in real time. So I'll go ahead and get started.
Okay.
Sounds good. Come on, start up here. There we go. All right, thank you all. It's good to see you. Paul, I'm glad you're here. Thank you for, for being there. City Council and staff and visitors here today to really share some excitement about a wonderful partnership that we've had for, now for over, over 15 years between the City of Lebanon and Build Lebanon Trails. We were established in 2015 and still, 2005, excuse me, and still we're all volunteer, no paid staff, and 100% of what we do is directly to help the City of Lebanon. Any dollars we raise, any maintenance that we do is, goes directly into the, into the city trail system. So the vision has always been to create a, a quality trail system that flows, that looks and feels like you're interconnected without any obstacles. And we've had a goal ever since we started to build at least one trail section per year. And that's quite a goal with over 60 plus trail sections, need to work on that to get it done within our lives, in our lifetime. We've had a lot of successes with the BLT and city partnership. We have over 15 miles of public trails now available. As far as funding goes, we have had great success with granting agencies, over 25 successful trail related grants. And our, our biggest bragging point today is that we've raised over $975,000 in private funding to build the Old Mill Trail, which is going to be the highest quality trail that we've seen in Lebanon. And we really need the, the continued financial support to continue this, this success of, of in kind from the city of, hopefully someday a city line item in the budget, so we know that the money will be there from year to year. And I understand recently that the Parks SDC funds are no longer available to help us with grant matching with trail funding, and we'd like to see if we can work some way back into that, that funding source with city council. So we all know about tourism, and if you talk to anybody that's out in the trail system, you'll, you'll find out that they come from all over, not just in our community, but they're coming from far and wide, they're finding the trails on the internet, and they're coming to visit our community because of it. Build Lebanon Trails isn't just about building trails, we're about long-term, sustainable trail maintenance. We have daily and regular trail workdays, monthly workdays after COVID, as we're getting out of COVID, we're back to doing a major trail maintenance days, and we plant trees and put in benches where at the end of this bench program, we'll have over 45 benches installed along the trails. And we developed new trail signings with the help of, of the city, some OSU students and Arts Commission, we've been able to come up with a wonderful trail signing, wayfinding signing. And what we're really trying to do is build a quality trail system. I've got a couple of examples for you. This one is right next to a, a six lane, very busy freeway between Sparks, Nevada and Reno. And you wouldn't know it, it's such a beautiful setting. That's what we're trying to build, but maybe a little more peaceful setting where we're building. But again, in Nevada, this is a new trail that was built along the east shore of Lake Tahoe, all with private funding. The whole point is, is we want to build that, this quality, this, to make things flow to, to allow it to be used by anybody regardless of abilities and to really go out and experience the, but the nature that we have available right in our own community. So how do we secure that trail future? We really, right now, we're, we don't have any place to build a trail. We don't have any right of ways or easements that enable us to build the trails. And we also need to have at least two shovel-ready trail projects on the shelf, ready to go. Yeah, so we believe that connecting the existing trails really should still remain BLTs and the city's top trail priority. There's existing gaps that I'll show you that, in our trail system that are relatively small. And if we can fill those gaps, we have a very real opportunity to create a connected hard surface trail of at least 10 miles all within the next three or four years. But we can't miss out on any opportunities. We have to be, to build this trail system in our lifetimes, we have to keep going with at least one trail section per year. I could go on and on about the benefits to the community, but I think we, we know what they all are. And this is our trails map, and what we're trying to do is get those yellow dots to go away and have a continual trail system. So by connecting the dots, what do we need to do that? Is we really need to acquire two trail right of ways or, or property ownership from the city of Albany. There's two properties that, that Ron Whitlatch has diligently been working, the city's been diligently working with the city of Albany for over six years to acquire, but we just can't wait another six years. In fact, we, we can't wait another year or two years. We have to secure those right of ways. And there, those right of ways are, will help us connect River Park to Had Irvine Park and her, and Had Irvine Park to the Dr. Thad Nelson Trail. So Build Lebanon Trails has done a really good job of being the intermediary between private and public landowners. We believe we could do the same thing with the city of Albany. And we just wanted to let city council and staff know that we're proposing to start contacting the city of Albany and having meetings with the city council and having meetings with staff to see if we can work through the stalemate that we have now of, of not being able to build on those trail right of ways that we need so desperately to connect our trail system. But there are other connections. We need to connect Cheetah Lake Park via the South Shore Trail to the, to the soccer fields. We need to connect the Burkhardt Creek Trail. There's many, many trail sections in the Burkhardt Creek Trail. You know, wonderful opportunity right now with the Alpaga development. The city is currently going through a storm grade utility plan. And until that storm grade utility plan is, is approved, we won't know exactly where that trail can be built, because there might be some storm drain retentions that have to happen within that property. But the point is, that can be one of the shovel-ready trails that are ready to go as soon as that, as soon as that's figured out, which is going to be in the near future. Now, why do we have to do this? Because we're missing great opportunities to bring outside funding into our community to help us build these trails for almost free. And literally, the trails, we can fund, the grants are from 40, 50, or 80% of the cost of a trail, and that doesn't even take into consideration how good we've been able to, how much, how good we've been at raising private funding. So there, the current grant opportunities that are out there. Yeah, one of them is RTP, the recreational trails grant. Again, we've been very, very successful with that grant program. We applied for a letter of intent to apply in April, but unfortunately, in just a few days, June 15th, that grant, that grant closes. And we don't have the, a project ready on the shelf to apply for that money. That's where we're missing that opportunity. But the good news is, there's two very special opportunities that are coming up, one-time opportunities, in that they both changed dramatically and have more funding. The Land and Water Conservation Fund, again, we've been very, very successful with, opens in the fall of 2021. This is the very first year that they've had an annual program. They're, they're going from a biannual program because they have more funding now into an annual program. And that is open in the fall of 2021. Just to show how successful we were, we applied last year for the Land and Water Conservation Fund, and we were picked number one out of all the grant applications. And because we did such a great job in, in raising private funds for the Old Mill Trail and because we want to build the Old Mill Trail this year, and that would have, to take the grant, we would have, the next year, we turned down a $261,000 grant that's going, now going to be able to go to another very deserving project, the Land and Water Conservation Council Fund. The other exciting thing is the local government grant program. It has more money again this year, or in 2021, in January 2022, that they didn't have before, because the 2021 program was stalled because of COVID. They weren't sure of, of the funding that was going to come in from, from the lottery. And so what they did is they closed down that program, they're taking all of that money and putting it with the money for 2022, and they're going to have more money than they have in a long, long time for that program. So it's not too late for us to get these right of ways, to get this, to get the, the shovel-ready projects on the shelf. But we don't have a lot of time where we're going to miss these opportunities. I've got two maps for you that are in your packet. We're gonna pass on this one, because I have a, a one later that shows better how it's all connected. But the goals for 21 and 22 are to acquire trail access across the city of Albany lands, north of River Park, that'll connect River Park to Had Irvine Park, and also the city of Albany-owned properties between Had Irvine Park and the existing Dr. Thad Nelson Trail, which connects into the Northside Community Trail that's already built. And with these two trail connections, we're going to be able to have continuous trail all the way from the south city limits to the north city limits, and all the way west to, to the Burkhardt Creek Trail, or within a half, a very short distance from that. So we need to construct those trails across the Albany properties this year, and next year, we need to construct the connected trail across Guilds Landing Park, because we believe there's an opportunity with the Oregon State Marine Board to build a pedestrian crossing across that parking lot. There, right now, we're dumping both the Old Mill Trail and the existing trails into the parking lot. In 2016, the Oregon State Marine Board developed a, a plan to redo that, the boat ramp and that whole area, and they've been sitting on those plans waiting for us to work with them to develop a plan. So, but most importantly, or not most importantly, but very importantly, is to have those shovel-ready projects on the shelf. So this is a, a bigger map that shows you more of what we're trying to do. The blue line up top center is the Old Mill Trail that's being constructed as we speak. The red line to the left of that is, is the, is the city of Albany-owned property that is left of River Park. There's a small section there that's Guilds Landing. But the other park, the other red section is the part that will connect from Had Irvine Park to the, to Markslu Trail. Right. Anyway, this is the Old Mill Trail, and I, I gotta tell you a little bit about this. The Old Mill Trail, with this one trail, we're connecting several low-income, underserved neighborhoods to, because of this trail connection, we're going to connect five city parks, two water trails, miles and miles of public trails. And with this one project, we're able to extend the soft surface Eagle Scout Trail to twice its current length. So it's going to be a, a soft surface trail that's going to go from Guilds Landing to River View Park, and then the hard service trail on top of the dike will be, so we're going to have two trails, and that one project alone is going to make a loop trail system of over a mile and a half. So this is what we're connecting to on the south at River Park. This is Guilds Landing, and we're connecting through the trails at Guilds Landing. Right across from Guilds Landing, on the other side of the railroad bridge and the Grand Street Bridge, is this wonderful riverside trail that was built with, with Oregon State Parks grant money. But at the very end of that trail is where Albany property is. So you can see how to extend our trail system, we really need to acquire that property. And why? Because with this interconnected trail system, we're going to be able to connect this beautiful area, very rare area, no city of our size that I know of has a Hundred Iker Lake with all of the facilities that are, and trails that are at this site, and the planned development of the Cheetah Lake Park that the city is currently, has plans to develop into a, a major attraction to our community. So this is, as all possible, has been all possible because of partnerships. This is in 2019 when the three walk bridges were, were made possible from private funding with one, and the city funded the other two, to be able to make a direct connection to the West River Trail, to River View Park, to the Old Mill Trail, and on the south end to Cheetah Lake. To be able to complete Porter Park and a community park, and along with that project is that 10 and 12 foot wide trail system that connects our community all the way from, from Main Street, all the way through to Cheetah Lake, onto the West River Trail, onto the Old Mill Trail, and eventually all the way to the Lebanon Community Hospital and Comp Northwest. So this is a picture of the Eagle Scout Trail currently. So just to talk about partnerships for a moment, so exciting that we have all through the community, many, many partnerships, but just, just for a minute for the Old Mill Trail, of course, the City of Lebanon is a major partner. We built them and trails wouldn't even exist, wouldn't have a purpose in life without the partnership with the city of Lebanon. And on the Old Mill Trail, Jeff Heathering Foundation donated the land and, and has a major cash donation, is making it possible to build that high-quality trail. Then John Nelson, again, a major financial contributor to the program, and they provided a challenge grant, that, that challenged BLT to raise more money in the community. Rick Franklin Corporation is our general contractor on the project, but also came in last year and, and cleared all that property, got it ready for, for the trail and for applying for the grants, and continues to give us in-kind donations towards that. Heather McDaniel came forward and did the capstone donation that made the completion of the challenge grant that the Nelson provided possible. UDL Engineering has been on, on board with us from the very first helping us with all the designs and donating a lot of their time and energy. Breezy Custom Concrete, I don't know how we were so lucky to get Breezy Custom Concrete onboard. He's got such a passion for this project. He really wants to be involved with this project, and he cut his hourly rate and got us the best price possible for that project. It came in lower than, than the other bids that we got for the project. Along with all of our projects, Lebanon Rotarians have always been there. They help us with the concrete pads for the benches, they provide those dog stations throughout. And where would we be without John Digges? We asked him to come out for, to help us maintain a project. He's there, he came out, he called and offered his services to help establish the soft surface trail extension of the Eagle Scout Trail, and many, many more people and private parties that have donated to that, to that challenge grant that we were able to raise $50,000 for this project. So this is before and after Rick Franklin was out there last year. So Build Lebanon Trails isn't just about building the trails, we're about sustained maintenance for the trails in the long term, forever, we hope. We've developed an elite volunteer program. This is our third year of the program where we pick up high-quality volunteers that want to be involved with the day-to-day maintenance and, and development of the trail system, very, very successful program. So in conclusion, the City of Lebanon Build Lebanon Trails really need to take immediate action to secure those trail easements and right of ways to, to prepare for the building of a minimum of at least one trail section per year. We really need to have two shovel-ready projects on the shelf and ready to go. So when a project comes up, we're able to use it, and when then we can, our goal is to keep two on the shelf, so we have another one ready to go. So this work is really needed to meet the identified need in the trails plan, to maintain the great successes we've had and to sustain this momentum of all the private funding coming in and all the, all the public funding coming in, to continue that high level of progress in reaching the identified community need that, that's outlined in the adopted, city council adopted Lebanon Trails Plan, which is to build 50 miles of public trail system inside Lebanon's urban growth boundary. So I, I really am asking city council for help. I know that the city staff is overwhelmed, has way too much to do, and I, and many, many high priorities that are very important to our community. Build Lebanon Trails really just wants to make sure that the trail system and, and the, the infrastructure that we're providing for, basically for almost free to the city is, is still a high priority, and that, that somehow we can help you with funding or find a way to be able to provide the, the staff time to be able to do those shovel-ready projects and to acquire those trail right of ways. So what are we doing? We're really building community. We always have. The Build Lebanon Trails goal has always been to build community through building the trail system. And it doesn't matter how rainy the day is, how cold it is, how wet it is. We just ask for people to come out to help us maintain the trail system, and they come out. And of course, there's John Digges with his, with his equipment to try to cut down on some of the physical labor that we're so willing to do and provide. So this is an invitation to each of you individually or as a group, we really want to take you out and show you these trail connections, where they are by foot, by bicycle, by bus or car, in the near, in the near future, when we can show you where these places are, and you can physically stand there and look at them for the plan of the entire interconnected trail system. We really firmly believe that you'll see the vision and that you'll, you'll have the same passion that we have for the program. And of course, that can include all the water trails to get you out with kayaks on the water trail. So thank you very much for your time, and that is the conclusion of the presentation.
Thank you, Rod.
You're welcome.
And thanks for all your dedication and hard work with BLT and even before when you worked with the city. And also all your volunteers, and I know you just have a great group of volunteers, and it's just great to see them out cleaning up the trails and getting things crap, but I, it's still a priority, and I know that staff will be working on that as soon as they can. And can you unshare your screen now?
Can I chime in on that, Paul?
Sure, go ahead.
I just want to say, I've been a fan of BLT since its inception in 2005, but of course, I, having been at the chamber now for the past year and a half, I have to tell you, you have no idea how many people stop in and say, do you have a map of the trails? Or do you have, do you have any trails around here, and they're so excited to see the map of the trails? It really does add so much to the livability of this community, and I, I think it's a really important group, and I thank you also for all of your, please pass our thanks as a council on to your volunteers.
Thank you very much. And, and I know we have support. We have support from staff and from city council. And we just want to continue the drive while we have it and bring this wonderful amenity to the visitors and to the community.
Thank you, Rod. Very good. Anything else from council?
No, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next up, we have public comments, and I think the only person we have is Cassie today.
Hello, everybody.
Beautiful there. I love the, the background, that's awesome.
Isn't that fun? I've been loving my virtual backgrounds with COVID. It's my favorite. Paul, it is good to see you. You've been missed, just letting you know. It's, it's nice having you back. Council, I just kind of give you guys an update on everything that's been going on with the downtown. If you were not downtown this last Friday, I'm sorry, that's all I can say to you, because it was awesome. We had Boys and Girls Club that was in the, was in the Strawberry Plaza, and that they had brought music. Rebecca Grizzle was down there getting a pie in the face, and it was wonderful. You can check out footage if you go down to the, go to Facebook and go to the Lebanon Downtown Association page. You can check out all the, some of the pie fun footage there. I'm sure the Boys and Girls Club has it blast on their page as well, but we had wonderful music flowing out of Strawberry Plaza. It honestly gave me and some of the people who sit on the steering committee really good hope for this summer for some bands and brews and concerts in the park, because we just had an influx of people come in and out of the plaza. And as far as Rolston Park goes as well, because we had music out there, we had two performers. James F. Wright had came out there for First Fridays, and so did the Broken Bard, which I'm going to name drop, is my cousin. So it was wonderful to hear voices singing. So it was wonderful to hear voices singing in our parks and seeing people go about. We had to change up our first Friday a little bit. And so this actually was not our art and wine walk. This ended up being the chalk art and carnival fun, which was obviously appropriate for being June and for Strawberry Festival. And we partnered with Strawberry Festival for this first Friday. They had came out and had done a scavenger hunt via social media and people were able to pick up the, you know, the was it Story Festival t-shirts and whatnot as their prize. And then we also had face painter out and then of course we had some other vendors that come out and people were just out and about and they were having a good time. So our first Fridays are definitely growing and getting stronger. And then so just to let you know, we are, we are going to have the art and wine walk. That's going to be set for August with we hadn't quite, our restriction levels quite hadn't changed the mask mandates and everything else. So just a lot of the vendors wanted to wait to see how things progressed. So we had no problem moving that. And when it did, we moved it. It turned out wonderfully for having a Boys and Girls Club event at the same time. So it was much better to have our outcome be the way it was. So it was wonderful. And again, like I spoke to, we have a concert series coming up in the summertime, which is going to be concerts at the park on Tuesday nights starting in July and going into August and the summer bands and brews being in Strawberry Plaza, starting again in July and going into August. And then also with our design committee, we had a wonderful community cleanup day. We were able to get the scrap king to come out. We had places, people contact him directly. So the scrap king could go pick up larger items and recycle them for our community members. So we got debris and a lot of junk off people's lawns. So it made the greater community looking better. And then, of course, we had the other box team that cleaned up the Ralston Park and came out and hit the downtown streets and we had people cleaning up through the alleyways this time and cleaning all the way throughout the city. So it was just a really great effort. And of course, we were asking people if they were not comfortable coming out to clean up around their neighborhoods. And people did say they saw people out and about in their neighborhood that day between that time clean up and doing their thing. So that was, so that had been really, that was on May 22nd that we held that. And of course, we had put out flags for Flag Day, I'm sorry, not Flag, excuse me, that's coming up. We had put out flags for Memorial Day. And we ended up having a troop 88 that it came out and a few LBCC students that came out to put out flags. And I have to say, and I know all of us feel this way because we work together, a lot of us to bring make big things happen for our community because it does take many hands to make work light. And that was something my grandmother had always said to me, and this was wonderful because we had done this flag display in record time, which was like 20 minutes. And usually I'll take over an hour and this because there were so many wonderful Cub Scouts and Boy Scouts that were there helping us. We were done in record time and then they came out again and pulled just as quickly. So it was a wonderful opportunity. They're going to be seeing them again. Our next opportunity to put out flags is going to be for Flag Day. And of course, for Fourth of July. So if anyone wants to sign up for that, they can go to Lebanon Downtown Association website, Lebanon Downtown Association dot com, and you can click on for volunteerism and find opportunities and sign up that way. So we're just doing really great. We're working on the mural project. We have an LBCC student that is interested and then we end up getting actually a few more community artists. I can't, I don't think I shared this with council last month, but we had a few more community artists that were interested in that as well. So that is moving forward. And then in talking with talking with Kelly Hart, we talked about possibly doing other ventures and maybe doing some like outside of downtown as we continue to grow this mural project and to doing some projects that would benefit like the bathrooms areas in some of the parks and maybe some interactive art there for because if there's art, you have less opportunity for people wanting to tag a work of art. So if we can get opportunities for kids to play and people to respect a building, that's awesome. So while working on things for the future and plugging away what we've been doing so far. So it's going really good. And open for questions.
Very good. It was exciting to see all the stuff going on downtown this summer. It's it's really nice and I was following everything on Facebook and it's great. Thank you for all the work you guys are doing.
We love it.
Anything else from anyone? Okay, thank you, Cassie. Is there anyone else? I see that there is Dr. Nelson's on. Did you want to speak at all? Anyone else? There was one other person. Apparently they've left the room, so. All right, last chance for public comments. Going, going, gone. All right, first up, first order of business is annexing A 2102. This is a public hearing. It'll be now open at 6:31 PM and your patience is appreciated as our city attorney goes through the required hearing process procedures.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A little bit distracted as I pulled up the Facebook site of put a put a plug in there for the Lebanon Boys and Girls Club Greater San Diego and make sure they see the pie and finish with Ms. Grisell. This is a public hearing and the city council will be found following the quasi judicial hearing procedure set forth in 197.763. The procedures are posted in on the walls here in the in the chambers, but they are also provided in the public notice as well as on the city's website. At the commencement of the hearing, we will ask the counselors to announce any ex party contacts or conflicts of interest. If you have any questions about what either of those are, please let me know. Start out with the staff report, which should provide information that staff believes is relevant to the identified criteria from the city's comprehensive plan or land use regulations. We will then allow questions of staff by council. We'll then open it up to public testimony. Audience may provide oral or written testimony concerning issues relevant to the hearing. We have asked that people sign up to provide testimony. All testimony or evidence must be directed towards a criteria described in the staff report or other criteria in the comprehensive plan or land use regulations. Please note, and importantly, failure to raise an issue, including constitutional issues or other issues related to the proposed conditions of approval, accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford this council and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issues, will preclude an appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals. Testimony of witnesses, we will know, we will start out with the applicant and proponents of the application, then open it up to anybody that's opposed to the application and then provide rebuttal if anything, if necessary, to the applicant. We'll then close the public hearing. It will be closed for deliberation by council only. No new evidence will be allowed. Discussion will be limited to the city council and staff. Generally, a decision will be made this evening. The decision will be to either approve the application where the council has found that the criteria have been proven or deny the application if the council finds that the applicant has not sustained their burden of proof. Council may approve an application with conditions for approval, which are supported by the facts of the case and land use plan or regulations. There are no questions, Mr. Mayor. You may ask, you've already opened up the hearing, but you may ask the city council if they have any ex party contacts or conflict of interest to disclose.
Okay, do any of the counselors wish to declare ex parte contact, conflict, or bias in this case? Okay, seen none. Have any comments regarding objections to the notice that was sent in this case to the jurisdiction of this body to hear and consider this case and received?
No, sir.
Thank you. And will the community development director please present the staff report?
Yes, sir. And first, welcome back. You were missed.
Thank you.
And good evening before you tonight. As a proposed annexation of the subject property at 800 Key Street, which is located on the south side of Keys and west of Seventh Street. The property is located within Lebanon, Lebanon urban growth boundary and is designated for residential mixed density within the comprehensive plan. With the requirements of the development code, the land is then assigned a corresponding first initial zoning of residential mixed density upon that annexation and the applicant has indicated accepting the initial zoning. The planning commission conducted a public hearing on May 19th of this year and found that the application complies with the decision criteria in the Lebanon Development Code and voted unanimously to recommend the city council approval of the application. Included in the agenda packet is a detailed overview for the findings to support the request. But in summary, the property is contiguous to city limits. It's available to be developed to urban densities and serviced by city utilities. And the applicant is accepting of the initial zoning, which indicates it is able to be annexed. As a side note, there is a concurrent 12 lot subdivision proposal included as part of the annexation that would go along with an adjacent property to the east. The planning commission reviewed the subdivision proposal at that May 19th meeting as well and approved the subdivision contingent upon the annexation approval by the city council. So it is recommended that the city council approve the annexation of the subject property and establish the corresponding zoning of residential mixed density. And that'll conclude my report. I'm available to answer any questions.
Okay, any questions for our community development director? Okay, seen none. Has the community development director received any comments on the public hearing?
No, sir.
Okay, the public hearing is hereby closed at 6:36 PM. Council discussion? All right, well, city attorney, please read the title of the ordinance.
Ordinance Bill number 2021-08, ordinance number 2964, a bill for an ordinance annexing and zoning property following council by landowners in said area pursuant to ORS 222.120 and ORS 222.222.170, file A 21-02 Lebanon Community School District. Move for approval?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve A 2102 annexation. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? Okay, the ordinance has been approved. Next up is state revenue sharing. And this is a public hearing. It will open the public hearing at 6:38 PM and the city's budget officer and finance director will provide the report.
Good evening, Mayor and city council. Welcome back, Mayor. Each year about budget time, we go through a number of public hearings to get the public's comment on one, the city's use of state revenue share. At this point, I have not received any comment, but in our budget, we have budgeted $220,000 in the general fund for general fund use of state revenue share. And would recommend that we adopt this resolution and certify to the state that we provide the city services and that we declare an election to receive the state revenue share.
Okay, council, have any questions? Sorry.
No, I was just going to say I'm available for any questions.
Okay, any questions for Matt? All right. So has the finance director received any comments on this public hearing?
There have been no comments.
Okay, the public hearing is hereby closed at 6:39 PM. Any council discussion? Will the city attorney please read the title of Resolution 21, 2021-08?
Resolution, Resolution certifying its eligibility and declaring the City of Lebanon's election to receive state revenues.
Call for motion?
Move for approval?
Is your mic on? Maybe he didn't hear that second.
Second.
Pull it closer to you.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution 2021-08. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, the motion is passed. And let's see here. Next item up is adoption of the fiscal year 2021, City of Lebanon approved budget. And the finance director will give his staff report.
Good evening again. On May 5th, the budget committee met and approved the proposed fiscal year 2122 budget. At this time, we have no changes to the budget, but would ask that we have a public hearing and then approve the motions for the resolution levying taxes and then also the revolution, resolution making appropriations. And just to reiterate, we're proposing that we levy the full amount of taxes of $5.13.64 cents per thousand and the special debt certification of an additional $1,632,565. And then, as we do each year, we'll come back next month with updated numbers for the delinquent sewer and storm drain charges as we have to wait for a full 18 months from the beginning of the calendar year that we can certify. So we have to come back with that next month. But I'm available to answer any questions. We don't have any proposed changes at this point.
Okay, any questions from council? All right, the public hearing for the adoption of the fiscal year 202122 approved budget is now open at 6:41 PM. Has the finance director received any comments on this public hearing?
No.
Okay. This public hearing is hereby closed at 6:42 PM. Council discussion? Will the city attorney please read the title of Resolution 2021-09?
Resolution levying taxes for the City of Lebanon's budget for fiscal year 202122. Move for approval?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution 2021-09. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? Okay, the motion passes. And the next one is will the city attorney please read the title of Resolution 2021-10?
Resolution adopting the City of Lebanon's budget and making appropriations for fiscal year 2021-22. Move for approval?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution 2021-10. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? The motion passes. Thank you, Matt. And see, we will temporarily adjourn as Lebanon City Council and convene as the Urban Renewal Agency. The finance director will give a staff report.
Hello, agency officials. So we've got our Lebanon Urban Renewal Agency budget and levying of taxes to pass again tonight. Just quickly going over, each of our urban renewal districts are levied at the full amount with the exception of the North Lebanon or Northwest Lebanon Urban Renewal District, which we have underfunded for the past say five years now, I believe. And that's levied at the property value of 60 million. And there have been no changes to the budget since the budget committee approved the budget. So I'm happy to address any questions.
Okay, any questions? Seen none, the public hearing for the adoption of the fiscal year 202122 Urban Renewal District approved budget is now open at 6:44 PM. Has the finance director received any comments on this public hearing?
I have not.
Okay, this public hearing is now closed at 6:44 PM. Council discussion? Will the city attorney please read the title of Resolution 2021-11?
A resolution levying taxes for the Lebanon Urban Renewal Agency's budget for fiscal year 2021-22. Move for approval?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution 2021-11. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion passes. And will the city attorney please read the title of Resolution 2021-12?
Resolution adopting Lebanon Urban Renewal Agency budget and making appropriations for fiscal year 2122.
Move for approval?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution 2021-12. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? The motion passes. Thank you, Matt. And we will adjourn as the Urban Renewal Agency and reconvene as the Lebanon City Council. Okay.
Can I say I like doing that as the Lebanon Urban Renewal Agency instead of each of our districts separate like we used to, we're just saved.
And just note, kudos to your finance director for discovering we could do that.
Yeah, thank you.
Very good. Yeah, I was wondering where the extra ones were on on that. That's excellent.
Yeah.
Thank you. Regular session number five, budget appropriate transfer and supplemental budget. Matt Apken, finance director.
Mayor and council. Here again. Last item tonight for myself, but we've got a budget adjustment that we would like to Here again, last item tonight for myself, but we've got a budget adjustment that we would like to approve. We throughout the year have noticed that there's been some changes that we've needed. We've had savings in some areas, other areas we were anticipating needing to make more expenses. One of the things that we brought to council earlier this year was some adjustments for market on non-union positions. You told us to go ahead and we said we'd bring a resolution back at some point to. To help with with that. Luckily, there wasn't a lot of area that needed any adjustment. But we did have some in the community development area because both. With Kelly's position and also some of the other people that come out of that font, that area, Ron's part of that as well as. Shanna. Had some adjustments that we needed there. In addition, we have the C D B G Housing Rehabilitation Grant that I don't believe at that time we expected to have any. Expenses this year, and so we needed to get the initial. Contract work with Dev Northwest done in this year as well. And then Lebanon School District also finally went forward with their construction exercise task tax. So we started collecting that for them, but didn't have the appropriations in the budget to send that money back to them. And so those are the changes in the general fund. Luckily, we'd collected more motel tax than we were expecting and since we're collecting the county's tax, we had. An additional amount of money that we needed to send to the county for collecting theirs, so we needed to increase that amount as well. We also had some changes in the amount from. Balance in our. Pension Obligation Fund, and so most of the funds are able to. Are able. To kind of deal with the couple hundred dollar difference that's gonna go in there from what we initially planned. Because we're gonna see savings in other areas, but our information services. Excuse me, our Information Systems Services Fund and our Custodial and Maintenance Services Funds didn't have that room because they don't transfer. Money to themselves, which is where we're gonna see some savings for the other funds. So that's the overall what we need to do. In the resolution, it gives specific dollar amounts. If you have any questions, I am happy to address them.
Any questions for Matt? Okay, seen none. I have the city attorney read the resolution title.
Resul. So on, resolution authorizing a transfer in budget appropriation and a supplemental budget for the city of Lebanon two thousand twenty dash twenty one budget.
Move for approval? Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution twenty twenty one dash thirteen. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? The resolution has passed. Number six, thank you, Matt, approval to award consultant services agreement for wastewater treatment plant. Facilities Master Plan Project number two oh seven one four, Ron Whitlatch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. What we have before you tonight is just exactly what you said. Contract to do a new wastewater treatment plant facility plan. As everybody's aware, we took over the plant in September of twenty twenty, took over operations and maintenance. Shortly thereafter, we had a condition assessment done by Dale Richwine from Richwine Engineering. That assessment kind of showed some deficiencies in the plant. Where we've got, we need some upgrades, major repairs. We hadn't intended to do this project probably until at least twenty twenty four, our existing plan is two thousand fourteen. But in order to make upgrades, we kind of need to make sure everything works together, so we're proposing to do that now. You see, we sent out proposals back in October of last year. We've kind of, we haven't, we haven't been on a great big ball of fire path here. As we're kind of waiting for this year's budget to roll around to get the project really started. We had three different consulting firms, Kennedy Jenks vetted out the top. They have, we've worked back and forth within multiple iterations to try and come up with a scope and a fee that we think is. Within reason, and we finally landed on one. You can see that part of this is gonna carry over into next year. We've only budgeted three hundred and fifty thousand dollars this year for this project. So that was part of the process was to stretch this thing out so that we can budget for the remainder next fiscal year and complete it. With that, I can answer any questions, but we are recommending approval of this contract to move forward and get the process started. This will also tie right in with our N P D S renewal permit process. They'll help us go through that as well. Our old permit expired in two thousand and one. We're kind of like everybody else and. D E Q has been sued so many times over permits that they're finally getting close to issuing new permits, so with that, I can answer any questions.
Any questions from council?
Kennedy, no relation, right?
No relation.
Okay, see no questions. I'll have, oh, we don't need that. It is just a motion. I'll entertain a motion for the. Agreement.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the Facility Master Plan Project two oh seven one four. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? The motion is approved. Approval to award River Road Construction Project number two one seven oh three, Ron Whitlatch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the section of River Road between Franklin and Garverd Street. I don't know if anybody's driven down it, but it, you almost need four wheel drive to get down it. It's been pretty beat up over the course of the years. We've used it for detour routes while we've built a lot of that area out back there. We're finally getting to that. This is budgeted for this upcoming fiscal year. You can see we got four bids, wide ranging bids, which tells me that the economy is rolling pretty good on the construction end, which we see every day. R J Armstrong and Associates was the low and we're recommending award of this project to them, and I can answer any questions.
Ron, will that extend sidewalks?
Uh, yes. Hopefully. So one, one of the things that we're working through is on the corner of Garverd and Park there, no, not Park, excuse me, River Drive. We're working with the property owner to try and get some right away in order to build the sidewalk. The curb's already built out and that's our goal, and I think we're getting closer with them on that. Worst case scenario is it doesn't happen, that little section of sidewalk, and it gets done at a later date, it won't affect the project. But that's the goal, and it'll only be on what I'll call the north side of that. It won't be on the canal side. We don't have the room to do that in there.
Thank you.
Ron, did we just move with R J Armstrong because they are the lowest?
Yes.
Okay.
It is, it is a procurement requirement for a bid for construction. You have to go with the lowest qualified. So they have to have cer, they have to meet certain standards, but you go with a low bid.
And we've used them on several other.
Oh, yeah, they're, they're a local contractor. They're great to work with. They do, they do a lot of workforce, so I'm very confident in what they've got.
Any other questions? Okay, with that, I'll entertain a motion.
I'd move we award the River Road Reconstruction Project R J Armstrong and Associates Construction. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the award for project two one seven oh three. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? All right, the motion is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Renewal of Municipal Court Judge Gerald Wade's employment agreement. Our city attorney, John Kennedy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. It's my pleasure to present a new two-year contract. Court Judge Gerald Wade. I think in my memorandum I put in there that he hadn't had a cost of living adjustment or a raise for four years. I believe we, we looked back at that again and it was actually five years. But what we did do is we negotiated a, a new two-year contract and we have. Matt Apken did a calculation for me as to what just that COLA increase would be over, over a four-year, over the four-year span, and it would be approximately two hundred dollars a month. Judge Wade and I talked and we, we proposed a one hundred month, one hundred dollar per month increase in the first year and an additional hundred dollar increase. In the second year of the contract. We have provided the contract for consideration by council. I would like to say that Judge Wade is here. I, I think every year, every two years that we do this contract, we, we, we see Judge Wade, he comes in. I know that, you know, he's as fascinated with watching the city council as when our counselors go to his courtroom and. And watch his, him rule the roost. And on a personal note, I would say that, you know, I've had a, over the years, I've had experience with a lot of judges. And, and, and I've also had a, a experience doing the criminal prosecutions in the, in the. City Municipal Court, and Judge Wade does an excellent job. He is patient, he is in charge, and he is respectful to the, to both the defendants and the lawyers that appear before him. And in my opinion, that is what makes a good judge, not whether they rule in your favor, but how they treat you and how they consider the cases. So it is my recommendation that the council approve the, the new contract with Judge Wade.
Okay, any comments from council?
I have attended. Court. Judge Wade's courtroom and have appreciated his demeanor and, and watching how I feel confident in how respectful our citizens are treated. I don't care about the lawyers. So, no, no, I really, I, and I encourage any counselor who has not done so to periodically, I try to go once a year. I have skipped the whole COVID season, so sorry about that, but I encourage counselors to go. We should, we should all be attending.
Anyone else? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we approve a new to your contract for Judge Gerald Wade.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the Municipal Court Judge Gerald Wade's employment agreement. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? It has been approved.
Mr. Mayor, I would clarify, just, it's very technical, but it is an independent contractor agreement, not an employment contract that is substantial in this context. But as it written, it's an independent contract, so I just wanted to make that clear on the record.
Okay, I was just reading the title of a, of the item order. Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
And they.
That's my fault, you're, Mr. Mayor.
No problem. And thank you, Judge, for all of your hard work and all that you deal with, and I just don't get any complaints from people. And that's pretty amazing, because people that come to you and come to court are usually pretty upset. And you, you handle it very well, and we really appreciate that. Okay, number nine, amending chapter two point two eight dot oh two oh of the Lebanon Municipal Code regarding renaming trust to senior center donation fund. Nancy Brewer, interim city manager.
Well, good evening and thank you. As we noted in the budget committee meeting, in doing some cleanup on funds, the senior center trust fund. Was not correctly classified. It's really not a trust, it's a donation fund, so we've, we've correctly classified it, but the code. That identifies what the senior center advisory board works on calls it the senior center trust fund, so we're just making a minor change to call it the senior center donation fund. I'll answer any questions.
Seems pretty straightforward. Any questions?
Very controversial.
Yeah. Okay, seen it. I'll have the city attorney read the ordinance bill number, title.
Let me read it for you.
A bill for an ordinance amending chapter two point two eight point zero two zero of eleven municipal municipal code renaming trust to senior center donation fund. Ordinance number two nine six three.
Move for approval? Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number two nine six three. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ordinance bill has been approved. And wow, we're down to number ten. City managers' report, Nancy.
It's, it's flying here. So like, as I noted in the written manager report for me, we are working through a lot of the guidance on ARPA. And I will note for the record, I have been in contact with Senator Merkley's office as, at the federal level, there's been discussion about roping back. ARPA monies to fund the federal transportation bill. There is a contingent in, I believe, the Senate that is. Including that in their package for funding, so I've been in communication with Merkley's office that we have already. Allocated three million of our three-point roughly five million dollars for a project, and so please don't take that back. I don't know what, that, that anything will come out of that, but I just wanted to, to share that with you. We need planning commissioners. We are short, 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 and have had another one that we have lost, so if you've got anybody that you think is dying to know about the city. Planning Commission is a really good place to get a wide introduction to one of the more complex subjects that somebody might face as a counselor. It's a good training ground for people who might want to be interested in counselor position in the future, so get some names in the hopper and see what we can do. I also would note, we are looking at a work session for July twenty eighth. It would be a noon work session. If you would let me know if you would be available, that would be, our plan at this point would be, it was, it would be a one hundred percent Zoom meeting. With all kinds of luck, I T will be working in this room for the last two weeks of July. Reworking the cameras and the audio system that would hopefully get us to the camera on the person speaking based on microphone being on. And some other improvements that might keep I T from having like seventeen computers in here running a meeting and, and eighty-five staff members, so. So, so if you are not gonna be available, if you could let Kim or I know, and otherwise, we will be planning to talk about stormwater rates coming out of the stormwater master plan. And what our consultant wants to do with that. And my last item in the packet, B L T had asked for a fee waiver for their poker fun run. And in their presentation tonight, they were, thought they were gonna talk about it, but they didn't. So I wanted to raise that and see if council would approve that B L T fee waiver so that we can get back with them tomorrow morning and, and let them know whether that's approved. So I just.
What is?
Simple.
What is the fee, Nancy?
It's, it's a fee waiver. So the B L T and, and Kim sent this up, I think, earlier today or yesterday. B L T is having a fundraiser. It is a poker fun run.
I meant the amount. I, I, I did read that.
I don't remember. It's not very much money, under a hundred dollars, I think.
Oh.
They just, they just would like to have that fee waiver since they're doing this as a fundraiser. See if I can find that in the packet, but.
I know that we waive the fees for B L T. I don't, I don't care how much it is.
It's been moved and seconded to waive the fees for the B L T fundraiser. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, it's approved.
Thank you. That's all I had, Your Honor.
Thank you, Your Honor. Are you talking to Judge Wade?
I know, I'm talking to you.
Start saying that to everyone.
Yes, yes, everybody has to do that.
Items from council.
I just have one, Your Excellency. I had a local business owner contact me about. Happened situation. He's, he owns the storage unit business in town, and he's had a major problem with break-ins and thefts through his security fence. I believe now they have a, a six-foot fence, barbed wire, all that stuff on it. And his solution was he sought out a vendor who sells, it's an electric fence that sits inside the perimeter of the exterior fence. So basically, the only people that would be able to contact that fence are people who would not belong inside the, the facility to begin with. And it's metered to go on and off at certain times that they're open and not open, and then there's emergency access for police and fire to be able to deactivate it, open it in the case of an emergency or fire, something like that, so. But the problem is that in our municipal code. And I believe it was code language, it was probably meant for more of residential properties, but. Electric fences are limited to only those used for agriculture, so for, for farm animals or things like that. And so. And so I, I think it would be worth asking Kelly and Nancy to probably work on maybe some options for us to where we could broaden that a bit. Because as we know, security is, is kind of critical for business owners, uh, and, and for their livelihood and for the economic livelihood of our community. And so, uh, maybe we bring this back, uh, with something that could apply more to the industrial or the business occupancy, bearing safety in mind, bearing, uh, you know, public service, uh, access in mind. And maybe come up with something that, that, uh, could be a little more, uh, workable for our business owners.
Could we not just, uh, approve, uh, a waiver for circumstantial waiver?
It's not a, it's not an application, it's in the municipal code, so we, we need to change the code, uh, because this is not a development application.
It's not in the development code, so we couldn't, we couldn't seek a variance, it's actually, I think it's in the nuisance code, yeah, in the nuisance coder, or.
And it probably doesn't really belong there, but I think it's worth having Nancy and Kelly look at it, Kelly, who of course is in charge of development code.
I looked at it briefly, and it, it's possible that that was actually in the code before we even had zones, like industrial, it's been there a long, long time.
Can we? Are there any other options?
Have all those options. Cutting through sections of chain link fence, and they just walk in, they'll cut a big hole in it, walk in, do their stealing, and walk right out. So the barbed wire, the cameras, the, the other things like that aren't the deterrent. So in scenarios like this, they cut through the fence, they walk in, they encounter a second fence with big warning signs that says, "Don't touch," and, uh, the choice is theirs, so.
I like it.
So if the council, uh, is, is in agreement, we'll work on, on bringing something back, hopefully to the July meeting and see if we can get that moving.
Thank you.
Sounds good. Anything else from counsel? Well, I just have to say thank you to, uh, Council President Bowen for taking over while I was incapacitated for a couple of months. And, uh, I'm feeling good, and I should be back being able to get out into town, uh, in July. But I'm up and around and getting back and going through the whole process of, of healing, so it's going very well and feeling very good, and doctors are quite pleased with progress. So, uh, thank you, everybody, for being patient, and I appreciate for you carrying on and, um, taking care of everything while I was gone, appreciate it.
I'll be back.
Welcome back.
Thank you. Anything else from counsel? Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just report one thing, we are monitoring, I know, uh, I was trying to think of something to call you as Excellency or something, but he already used that one. I know Nancy, uh, is monitoring, as is Kelly Hart, and it's, is our office, as the bills work their way through regarding, uh, the camping and the, and the home, and, uh, and, uh, addressing the homeless issue and the camping. There are still, those bills still are working through the, uh, the legislature substantially, the, uh, Kena Kotek Bill. Um, and we're continuing to monitor that. Um, our office did, uh, attend a, uh, a CLE that was, uh, part of it was, uh, directed by the Medford, City of Medford City Attorney, and then City of Beaverton City Attorney. Uh, just kind of outlining the, uh, the legal issues related to, um, the different cases that are going through. The, the district court case that's getting appealed up, the Blake case, and then obviously the Boise case. So I, I think we're still monitoring it, still a little early to, uh, start, you know, pr- providing, uh, guidance as to the, the amendments to our code as it relates to camping. But I think probably by the July, I would think, and maybe the August meeting, we should have enough guidance, uh, to bring back some, uh, changes as it relates to those based on what ends up getting passed by the legislature, which substantially is, is codifying what the Ninth Circuit is telling us, so.
Anything else? Okay, seeing none, uh, public press, or, uh, I should say public, we don't have anybody at this point, but is there any press that has any questions? Either online or in-person there?
There is no press in-person, just, uh, just.
Okay. Okay, very good, then, uh, next scheduled meeting is July fourteenth at six PM, regular session. And then, uh, if you have the availability, let Nancy know, July twenty-eighth at noon, uh, will be a Zoom meeting, and, uh, let her know your availability for that meeting. And with that, uh, we are adjourned, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.